Please pass for the invitation by Reverend Bill Gerard, retired United Methodist pastor.
Let us pray. Dear Lord of us all and Creator of all living things, we acknowledge that you are the one who reigns over heaven and earth, watching over us and seeing if we are living according to your precepts. Please guide us into listening to your wise and clear voice of grace, love, and justice as we seek to do the business of our city. Remind us of who you are and how you have ordained the work of governments to keep order among citizens, to protect and provide for the vulnerable, and to be a positive force for the good of all. We commit this meeting to the loving care of your spirit, and may your will be done, and all that is done here. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first I'd like to recognize one of our interns, Ms. Randy Leo. Anybody know her? You may or may not recognize her from the video eleven years ago done by the Jackson group, a notable political campaign. She's working with Mandy now for five weeks, she's been there five weeks. And then here's the full disclosure of that, Mr. Leo. We have several important, interesting presentations. First, I'd like to call Mr. Dawson Hart up here. We're going to have a confirmation on behalf of the National Federation of the Blind. And here's Riley. We're at the purpose of the Republican County Chapter of the National Federation of the Blind, shall be to advance the general welfare of the blind in the county. Whereas the Cattolica County Chapter will operate as a mechanism to reach the blind and interested persons to come together to plan and carry out programs to improve quality of life in the blind. Whereas, it's objected to the work of the parents of blind children to promote a national cause for and social advancement of the blind. Whereas, to achieve the integration of the blind into society and to take any and all actions which will improve the overall condition and standard of living of the blind. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim July 15th as National Federation of the Blind of the Cattolica County. Thank you. I wanted to just recognize, it's my member of some, my members Kane, if y'all can see him. Thank you. They, they, they're what makes our job. Thank you, sir. If you want to get a picture of them, yeah, look at it. Now make sure Riley's in there.
We need some of those important ones.
That's right.
I think the best pictures are the three dollars. Okay, thank you, sir. And now, who's going to handle the recognition of the Crawdad staff and Connie Kincaid?
Mark Willett, if you can call him Mark.
Mark Seaman. Mark Seaman, the man responsible for the fireworks. As the Hickory Crawdads.
Thanks, Mayor.
What a wonderful asset the Crawdads are, and this year we go to the All-Star game, and I would ask you something for this. And Crawdads are happening right here.
Thank you. Mayor, members of city council, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you about the 2014 South Atlantic League All-Star game and the surrounding events that we had on June 16th and 17th. Connie, why don't you come up and join me? The game was played in front of a sold-out crowd, gave us an opportunity to showcase Hickory and their renovations at the ballpark. Nobody that attended the game or any of the events came away a loser, including the players, as the game went into extra innings but ended in a 4-4 tie. It was extremely exciting down the stretch, as five of the eight runs were scored in the final three innings, including four in the 10th inning alone. The MVP of the game was Dominic Taylor from the Lexington Legends. He went home literally with a piece of Hickory's history. For his efforts, he was awarded a refiner compliments of Vanguard Furniture. So that was nice to send him home with a piece of furniture from Hickory. The event brought in people from all over the southeast and beyond. There were at least 19 states and seven countries represented here in Hickory for the two-day event. The events surrounding the game were equally well-received. The All-Star bash under the sales was a fun time for fans, young and old. It was a great opportunity for fans to interact with the All-Stars in a casual setting, whether waiting in the buffet line, listening to Extraordinaire's under the sales, or playing cornhole with the players. The luncheon at the crossing at Holler Mill was a tremendous event with great food and a great venue to introduce All-Stars and recognize the newest members of the South Atlantic League Hall of Fame, who many of you will recognize, Randy Engel, who has been in the Braves system for a number of years, Luther Beaver, who many of you know as Don's older brother, or older brother, who they are the first brothers to enter the South Atlantic League Hall of Fame, George Murphy, who if I'm not mistaken, used to sit in that seat right there, and Charles Young, who was with us here today. New hip and all, by the way, that's why he's got the cane, he got a new hip a few weeks ago. Between the event downtown, using Holler Mill for the luncheon, providing the MVP a piece of furniture in the ballpark, we felt like we gave folks a little taste of what Hickory is about and has to offer. We heard a number of positive comments from visiting players, league executives from other teams, fans both local and from out of town, about Hickory and the hospitality everyone gave them that they came in contact with. On behalf of the Crawdads and the ownership and staff, we'd like to thank the city for their help with the All-Star game and their partnership with the renovations of LP France Stadium. We've heard rave reviews about all the renovations from local people, from the teams that have visited, and from people traveling through town that have caught a game. We'd also like to thank Mandy Pitts with the city, Connie Kincaid with the Downtown Development Association, and B.B. Leach with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for helping us put together the All-Star bash under the sales. Without their help, there's no way this event could have gone off. As well as, we'd like to thank all of our sponsors who helped make the entire two days a fun event for everyone involved. We were really pleased to bring this event to Hickory and hope everybody that was able to come out enjoyed it. And we look forward to doing it again in another 14 years when it comes back to our turn. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Connie, who has a belief few things more specific to the All-Star event under the sales.
I brought pictures. On June 16th, Hickory Downtown Development partnered with the Hickory Crawdads, the City of Hickory, and the Hickory Metro Convention and Visitors Bureau to welcome the South Atlantic League All-Star teams to Union Square for the Downtown All-Star Bash. Okay, I'm having problems here. Oh, here we go. Now, if you've ever been to the ballpark, you'll agree that these folks know how to throw a party. We've worked with Mark and Megan for many years on Oktoberfest, and working with them is always a treat, and it happened the same way with the All-Star bash. We had a great team working on this event. Staff and volunteers performed a number of tasks, from selling tickets to organizing a cornhole tournament. North met South and came together for an evening of food and drink and fun in downtown Hickory. Young baseball fans filled their albums with baseball cards and got autographs from all the players. One kid referred to the player as "his hero of the diamond." It was quite heartwarming. Hickory citizens came out to welcome the All-Stars and enjoy the music. Conrad came out to play and got folks dancing under the sales to the beach sounds of the Extraordinaire's. Hickory is fortunate to have a baseball club like the Hickory Crawdads and a stadium like LP France in our community. It takes the partnerships of many organizations to build a community, and Hickory Downtown Development was thrilled to be a partner in the Downtown All-Star Bash. Now, we hope to build a tradition by kicking off each baseball season with a Crawdad bash under the sales in downtown Hickory. We need to think on that. And that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you. Let's hear it.
I'd just like to say thank you to the Crawdads for the many opportunities the Lions Clubs have had there to visit with you for games. Appreciate it. And with the Leader Dogs here, our Lions Clubs, we collect little can tabs to help buy Leader Dogs for the blind, so nice to have both of you here at these both groups. Thank you all very much.
Well, that's about as all-American as it gets, and that was fantastic. Mr. Berry, can you tell us a little bit about the recognition that Mrs. Kincaid recently received? Was it from the Main Street, North Carolina Main Street group?
It was, but I can't tell you exactly what the recognition was. Longest-serving, I have someone whispering in my ear. Connie, why don't you just tell them?
I was recognized by the National Main Street Center as being one of eight in the country that have the sales longevity.
That's good. And if you think... And if you think we're involved in politics, we are. Try being the Downtown Association Boardman. Okay. Retiring boards and commissions. These are not there. This is the time of year when we honor outgoing boards and commissioners and recognize, and we're pleased to recognize those who have served so faithfully, about one in every 200 Hickory citizens serving on this mission. This is important, and it's valuable input from us, is accepted or rejected, or whatever you do. So I'm going to call off the names of those who said they would be here. We have three who are not going to be able to be here. And what are their names? I had that at one point.
It's up there.
It's over here. I had it. Well, we have three that were. She gave it to me all day. There it is.
It's always the manager's fault.
From the Business Development Committee, these are the folks who have helped us identify ways to promote Hickory as a business destination and place to start business. And they continue to be active, and their efforts are greatly appreciated and are reflected in the things that we have going on for the coming years and beyond. We are in ready for the group. Mark Huckabee. Can we take a photo, Dr.? Okay. Mark, you just had a knee surgery replacement? What is it?
Leg with damage.
Leg with damage, okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you, sir. This thing's a fucker. It's Alan Jackson, but I'm gonna... Alan Jackson. Ugly heart.
And Donna.
Last year, one of my favorite commission members, Charles Vichel, retired, sitting down after eight years of community appearance. And he came up and gave him this, gave him this, and Charles got these six rings out of his body. And he looked at it and said, "Is that all there is?" And I said, "Turn around, piss fuck, come up and give him a hug." "Please, don't say 'is that all there is,' I'm gonna get baggered over."
I'll do it.
Okay. Historic preservation, Curtis Mouser. Oh, thanks, okay. Youth Council, Tommy Abernathy. Come here, Tommy. Talk to East Carolina, is gonna end up with some kind of medical, some kind of medical job. She was president of the Youth Council this year, right?
Yes.
And did an outstanding job. You're doing that great. Rachel Alor. How do you pronounce that tone? Nick Bollet. I wish you'd have known B.C.H. or the most outstanding young people in our school. They are busy, they're doing things, they're doing internships, they're working, they're saving money for college. They're messing.
That's mom's thing, yeah.
Sean Hall. Lily and Huckabee. Huckabee, my victory. Was Lily one of my interns?
Yes, sir.
Kelly McNeeson. Kelly, what's her name? Shannon, who knows? And Sierra Pajic. The ones who are stepping down but not present are Ryan Lover, Business Development, Van Taylor, Historic Preservation, and Harriet Smith Parks Recreation. The process for being appointed to a commission, very simply, we submit an application, we go to Mr. Smoke, the city clerk. We always have a lot of applications. But I would say, if you're interested in serving and you're the kind of person who can do a good job, you will get a chance to serve. Thank you all the volunteers, we appreciate you and make governing Hickory a lot easier. Okay, we have, tonight, we have, one, two, we have six people requesting to be heard. There are two ways to request to be heard. One is like our first speaker who requested an audience a couple, well, several weeks ago, or you can request an audience when you come to the meeting and you sign up. We ask people to be respectful of the time restraints of others. We suggest three minutes, but we have a policy that people do not leave here with something important to say and didn't get to say. At the end of the three minutes, the person, at the end of the time the person is speaking, they take their seat, and at that time, I may or may not offer remarks. The person speaking is finished for the evening, however. And your rebuttal, if you would like to rebut my remarks, will come at the next meeting. With that, I'll call our first, the person who signed up first, we'll do this in order, Mr. Jeff Hines.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mick, and then additional city management, appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I wish that I could tell you that it's always been on my bucket list to address the city council, but that's not the case. And I can assure you, I wouldn't be here if it was about me. And, but nonetheless, I'm going to read this, just simply to make sure that we cover the point. "I and many others believe it is important to address Horford Cove, not only for those on Horford Cove, but the residents. It's important for Lake Hickory, Glen Hilton Park. These assets are vital to both residents and visitors. Unfortunately, we are very close to diminishing the use and aesthetics of one, and for all practical purposes, losing the other. The cause, not to oversimplify, is the runoff of debris, sediment, and trash from the streets and streams of Hickory and surrounding areas. The problem is primarily due to the sheer volume of runoff generated during even short periods of heavy rain. We have provided photos of the debris and trash which accumulates in the cove. This includes everything from just common litter off the city streets to big wheels and basketballs. Unfortunately, the photos inadequately depict the larger problem of present and increasing sediment that is filling the bottom of the cove to a level of one to three feet of water depth in most areas. Issue is not new and has in the past been addressed with genuine intentions of at least maintaining the cove and Glen Hilton Park by previous city management. In the early 1980s, partial dredging of the cove by the city of Hickory with a city-owned dredge, which is no longer an inventory, was accomplished. Early 1980s, Glen Hilton City Park initiated, constructed by the city of Hickory Parks and Recreation, and I believe with participation from the Hickory Roadie Club. Late 1980s to 1990, a sand dredge operation was initiated inside the park, which applied sand to the city of Hickory for various construction projects. This operation additionally helped reduce the amount of sand and silt which washed into the cove and supplied sand, I believe, at no cost to the city. We now buy this material on an annual basis, but I have no idea what that amount is. It is my understanding that the operation was suspended by the city of Hickory management, Parks and Recreation, due to safety concerns within the park. In the early 1990s, a dredge company was contracted by the city of Hickory to dredge the cove and to the lake channel. In 1984 and 85, a new bridge was constructed over Horford Cove, was not visible. At that time, I've given you some photos. You'll see, if you look at those photos, an island that is presently in Horford Cove. That cove, that island, was not visible from the bridge in 1985. The water depth at the old Rock House, which some of you remember, was 20 feet. So now what? To reclaim, revitalize and maintain the park, cove, and lake, we believe the first step would be to eliminate the runoff into the park by creating retention ponds or catch basins that will allow the removal of sand, trash, and debris prior to its entry to the park, cove, and lake. The second step would be to, as permits allowed by Duke Energy, to begin contracting and dredging, and a dredging company to dredge the main channel of the cove. The only thing I would remind you is that without step one, step two is only temporary. We additionally would request at least a review of the Sixth Street runoff and storm drains feeding directly into the cove. Horford Cove was at one time a deep-water cove with adequate water excess to home stocks and a public dock with rental slips and fuel. Today, it is virtually inaccessible by motorized boats, fishing, or otherwise. The entrance to the cove, which was once indicated with no wake buoys, now has only one buoy that says "dangerous." The encroachment of sand, silt, debris, to include large trees and tree roots that's rapidly extending to the main channel of the lake and the river, runoff from city streets and storm drains exacerbated by the convergence of several creeks originating as far away as Fry Regional and Longview, often resulting in high volumes of water flow through the park into the cove and the main channel of Lake Hickory. In closing, Horford Cove, in our opinion, is one of the most critical natural resources and important assets that Hickory has been blessed with. There's been much discussion regarding inspiring spaces, projects to enhance Hickory as a place to live, raise families, work, play, and visit. Glen Hilton Park, Horford Cove, and Lake Hickory are existing inspiring places. They deserve our attention and resources to ensure their future is visually attractive, clean, and accessible. It would be tragic to ignore and waste such an important asset as Glen Hilton Park or diminish the natural resources of Horford Cove and Lake Hickory. On a personal note, the realization that the lake bottom has filled 16 to 18 feet in Horford Cove since 1985 is scary. When you consider that we've also dredged in the 1980s, it's even scarier. And I believe it would be less than prudent to not consider that without action, the cove, I believe, will disappear, and an accessible portion of Lake Hickory will be gone. And I also remind you that without action, this will continue to encroach on the main channel of Lake Hickory. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, could we ask staff to do a study of the number of coves that have similar issues as well as this one? And let's get a ballpark on what would be involved in, what would be involved in remediating this? Lake Hickory, of course, is our number-one recreational amenity in Hickory, and I think we need to, we've been warned here about the damage, and let's see what we can, what we need to do, if anything. I'm not saying we, you know, we're not making up our minds tonight, but what would be a reasonable time to develop an overview of that?
Well, I think we can give you an overview pretty shortly. There is a lot of regulatory issues involved in all of this, so we'll have to wade through that so that you understand who has jurisdiction over what and all the different components that have got to be involved, but we certainly in the next couple of months can come back to council with some thoughts on what will be involved.
What do you want to say? At our, at our fourth meeting from tonight?
Yeah, we'll certainly get an update.
Fourth meeting from tonight, we will have...
So I'm sure during the FERC process that sedimentation and this type of stuff was covered in the documents. Is can that be part of, part of the city's, when you pull, pull in what's in the FERC licensing degree?
It'll have to be, yeah. That's what, that's, that's just the tip of the... That's what, that's, that's just the tip of the iceberg, so to speak, of all the regulatory components of, you know, dredging. Things used to be a lot simpler than they are today in terms of things that you can and can't do in bodies of water. So we'll, we'll take a look at all those and try to give you a comprehensive look at, you know, what would be involved in remediation and dealing with this cove and any others that have issues.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have James Thomas Schiff.
Thank you, council. The reason why I'm making this presentation is because this is my 48th anniversary of life, and what I'm going to speak about are two issues that I believe are the most important issues that we've faced over this generation. The Chamber of Commerce has a poll in which they are asking young people about ways to improve Catawba County and make it more desirable for young professionals. I have taken a broader look, and here are my top 10 reasons why we aren't attracting young people to live, move to, or stay in the Hickory area. Number 10, in this community, young people, the young middle-class and poor people have seen an enthusiastic willingness to cater to the older and more affluent folks at the expense of what would benefit them. Number 9, this opening generation of the modern 21st-century reality says that it is a priority, I've looked at polls, they say it is a priority for them to have a role in making the world a better place. They don't want to live in communities where control and authority rule over love, empathy, and kindness. Number 8, the millennials want autonomy, but if they do have to work for somebody else, they want to work for a person that serves as a mentor, not as an authoritarian. They don't want to deal with old-school, regimented, mechanical, simple, black-and-white, dogmatic mindsets. Bosses need to look at their workforce as partners, not commodities. Number 7, young people aren't looking for a job, they're looking for a career. They want employment where they think the owner is in it with them. And cares about their interests. It should be common sense and a natural derivative that if business owners take care of their employees, that employees will do likewise, and the business will thrive. If that becomes the norm in this, in this community, then this community will thrive. And here are six things that these young people and others can see about this community. Number 6, this community's powers that be have demonstrated several times through actions a "do as I say and not as I do" collective personality. Number 5, career success is certainly more easily attainable in structures based upon hard work and merit rather than social caste systems based upon who you are related to and who you know. Number 4, constructive critical thought is an asset and imperative to the success of a free and open society. We have seen the local powers that be take hostile actions several times against people when it wasn't necessary, just because these people dissented or even asked questions, as though answering to the people would somehow lead to chaos. Number 3, we have seen a mindset where stories, messages, information, ideas, and processes must be controlled and well-crafted. Being real and unfiltered has become the victim, as in 1984 and thought crimes. Number 2, people who attempt to control messages create bottlenecks of information. And information is a valuable commodity in this age. This is the information age. This has created a hindrance to real economic activity. And number 1, and last but not least, we have seen through disrespectful actions where this government and other, not just y'all, but other governments in this area have basically told people, "When we want your opinion, then we'll give it to you." We haven't lost the young people because of inanimate objects like the things that y'all have discussed, these infrastructure issues. We have lost them through actions. But don't take these words negatively. Take them as an opportunity to evolve towards a better reality. Thank you.
Meredith Ross.
Hello. I'm going to split this here, you know y'all can't see it, refer to it during, but my name's Meredith Ross. I'm taller than that microphone. And I have the Hickory Tree on Olenor Road. I see some of my friends and, first city council meeting ever, young person, hooray. But I just wanted to start by introducing, I'm representing in the Olenor Road Business Association. You guys might have seen our recent article and ad in the Hickory Daily Record. And I, my husband and I opened Hickory Tree about five years ago together, and are young, successful entrepreneurs planning to stay and raise our family in Hickory. We love Hickory. We love Boone, too, but we love Hickory. Anyway, I went to ASU, you can tell. And we really, after five years ago when we opened, we saw Olenor Road as an area in somewhat of decline, still somewhat, at times we feel that way, but within, and this board kind of features businesses, of within the last five years that we've been open, we've seen 10 to 12 new businesses come and stay, improving their facade and the front of their building, as well as starting successful and thriving businesses. Everything from Fabrics &amp; More that moved from 321 to our district, to new businesses like Table Rock Outdoors, also young and enthusiastic entrepreneurs who are there in the old Ellis Hosiery Mill. But we've seen the energy happening over on the Holler Mill side of town, and we've heard the, you know, bond referendum, and we've heard, "We just really want to be on your radar as something that's also an up-and-coming destination, growing, energized area." These new businesses, we feel like are going to stay. New property owners in the area are finding better tenants and able to rent their properties. We know that downtown has been tough. The rents are high. They don't seem to be coming down, so a lot of that overflow is coming to Olenor Road, and we're happy to be a place where young people can open businesses at a lower rent with high traffic, that kind of thing. But I did also want to just say some of the main goals of our group, just so you guys know what we're up to. We're not asking for a lot of city funds or help, but we just want you guys to know we're there. And when, when the bond referendum passes, Lord help us, we would love to be thought of as a gateway, I think we've officially been deemed a gateway, and we know that huge amounts of people travel Olenor Road to get to Hickory and kind of go like this, because lately it's not been that great. But we've seen a lot of improvement and hope to see more. But our main goals as a group are to attract new businesses to fill empty properties. Gavin likes that one. And we like the idea of becoming more of a destination for everything from retail to, you know, socks, you know, whatever happens, but we are just happy to see businesses open and do a good job there. We'd like to see the beautification of the properties. When we come together, we're coming together quarterly right now, and there seems to be a real energy around improving, you know? One person will come to the meeting and get kind of inspired, like there's a bug, like, "Oh, yeah, maybe I should paint my facade," or, you know? And just kind of facilitating a lot of that, which is really encouraging. We've seen Jeff Hale fix up the old Mexican pottery, and it looks so good, and we're so glad to have him in our group. He's a really helpful new energy. But also, we want to do some branding on our road. Gavin has successfully acquired a property that has a little corner that we could put a "Welcome to Olenor Road" sign up. Once again, not asking for any city money, trying to do it ourselves. And then we'd like to do banners kind of along the road, like downtown, to brand our district and make it sort of a destination with some branding to it. And also, we would just like to say, you know, to the community, this is, to me, my number-one goal, Olenor Road is a great place to do business. When I was recommended to open there, the Hickory Tree, our furniture store, I was not really excited about it. I said, "I'd rather be in Vieux Monde or downtown, somewhere prettier," but it's been a great place for me to be in business. And we hope that you guys, if you ever have an opportunity to speak to our district, the people thinking of opening in that area, that you would give us a good hurrah. But I've had a great time being there. My husband and I love being there, and we look to see great improvements, and we'll keep you informed as to how it's going, so.
And Mr. Ross.
Oh, I'm bored. No, yeah, yeah, I can't block it until you... You guys can see this later, it's really encouraging.
Hi, thank you. My name's J.D. Ross. I'm also from the Hickory Tree and also representing the Olenor Road Business Association tonight. And I belong to her, so I'll kind of piggyback on some of the things she said. One of the things for our association, we have some pretty grand ideas for what we would love to see on Olenor Road. It's such a gateway road into downtown. People coming from 321, from I-40 often use Olenor Road as the way into downtown or the way to Hickory. One of the biggest things challenging Hickory as a whole, and particularly our district, is wayfinding. Just finding your way around town is tough in Hickory, and as a business owner, we get calls all the time from people from out of town asking for directions, how to get to town, and we have to figure out how to tell them, you know, to find our store, which is difficult, if you've ever driven around town. But we think that's an easy challenge that our group can help address. If you are coming north or south on 321 and you turn at the new intersection at Clement Boulevard, which is fantastic, it's a great, makes it easy to get in there, the name of the road you turn on is Clement Boulevard. Our address at the Hickory Tree is Olenor Road. If you continue on up toward downtown, it changes to 11th Street, I believe. Then you continue on further, it changes to 3rd Avenue Drive, and then it changes to 3rd Avenue, and then it splits to the 2nd Avenue, 3rd Avenue split, before you get to downtown. So you can imagine, we're close to Olenor Road, but businesses in our association further up the road have to tell people street names, and they say, "Don't pay attention to the signs, just turn there and you'll end up at our business." So that's, that's a thing that we think we can help address that's fairly simple. Other towns nearby do a good job of directing travelers into their downtowns. We visit Lenore and Morganton, Asheville, there's, you know, really good-looking signs that say "Welcome to Lenore" or "Downtown Morganton, this way," and then as you go, make turns, there's good, clear signs, and there are some of those around, around town. But we would love to see one maybe at 321 pointing up Olenor Road saying, "This is the way to downtown from this side of Hickory." Those are just some of the things. We know nothing's going to happen in the near future, but we have ideas like this for the next five or 10 years that we would like to see. We think our businesses, of course, we would love to benefit from things helping our district and helping town, but it'll help people all over town, it'll help downtown, it'll help 321, so we want to be an asset to the city. You know, we want to offer our ideas, and we would love to work with the city, and I just wanted to thank you in advance for the work that we hope to do over the next few years. Thank you.
J.D., hold on. J.D., how many people here represent your...
Now, I think there's six or eight people here tonight. Raise your hand, anybody from our association. I think we have about 15 members, businesses, or property owners represented. We, you know, there's no membership, it's just a loose association of just business and property owners who get together and talk about ways we can help each other, encourage each other. I know we, we met a month or so ago and gave out information for the city's community appearance grants and landscaping grants, and my wife and I applied for those for our business and encouraged some other businesses along our road to do the same, that kind of thing, just making sure we all know what, what assets are there, are available, and encouraging each other to do, to do things like that, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I had the pleasure of dropping in on the living tree and also visiting with the Hales at their location. The Hales have done a job, a renovation job, that reminds you of being in a Greenville or a Durham, an old property that has been turned into a very inviting and beautiful space inside. And Ally has been accepted to Western Carolina in a new program, and we're excited, she's one of 10 chosen to go there. So she's heading off to college, my goodness, what, about a month?
Yes.
Good for you. All right.
Also, Ally is a Hickory Public Schools Volunteer of the Year. Thank you for your work.
Thank you all, folks. You're doing something, it's productive, you're not cursing the darkness, you're not blaming other people, you're saying, "Guys, help us, help Hickory," and we like that, that's fantastic. Larry Pope.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crone, thank you for providing me with an opportunity to be heard. I know that the majority of the time, when I come to the podium to speak on issues, city council has a tendency, in my personal opinion, not to be willing to hear exactly what it is and to look at what I am addressing. I have made a phone call at least two to three times to what is supposed to be Ward 4 City Council member. That council member, and I'm talking about Councilman Guest, has not returned a single phone call. The time that I called him, and I even left a message with his son, that is a deputy sheriff for Catawba County, and told him what it was that I was wanting to talk to Councilmember Guest about, and that was, I had filled out an application a few months ago for the Citizens' Advisory Board that I noted there were two vacant spots that had not been filled. I was interested in one of those because I attended one of their meetings, and as I have talked to city council as a whole before, when it comes to the community block grant funds that come down from the federal government that you distribute as a council to various groups and organizations within our city, I have asked a question, and I have been told in the last two years that city council was going to look at who receives those grants and look at the possibility of getting some of that grant money to other groups that need a hand up instead of a handout. I have recommendations that I feel like need to be considered, and that is, after a organization gets one of those community block grants 13, 14 years in a row, it's time to wing that group, some of that grant money that they go after every year. What I have found, even this year, there is one group in particular that does not come to any of the public hearings, but yet and still, they get money by simply writing a request and submitting it, and then they're put on the list of groups to get money.
Three minutes.
That group, in my opinion, caters solely to individuals who, the majority of them, are not from Hickory. Is not a Hickory resident, has not been a Hickory resident until they came to the program for which they're involved in. So what I am asking of my city council representative is, when I called and I made a request of you to nominate me for the appointment from your ward, since I live in that ward, to the Citizens Advisory Board and have never heard back from you, that's why it upsets me, when we have a modified and large voting system where, when Ward 4 chooses their representative, and then when it goes to the general election, Northwest, Northeast Hickory chooses who represents each ward of this city. Hickory chooses who represents each ward of this city, because they have the largest population of residents in our city. So what I will ask is, if you can't represent your ward, then you need to step down and let someone else who the ward chose to represent Ward Four fill your seat. Thank you.
I would just like to point out two things, and I'm going to ask Mr. Guest not to respond. Mr. Pope, you can go ahead and take your seat, please.
I want to hear what you have to say there, because I may have to come back again.
No.
Because, you know, you do this every time I speak.
I have a motion, Mr. Pope, out of order.
And...
Second. Got a motion?
You know, that is...
All in favor, say aye.
Because you don't want to hear from me. You're like the rest of the council.
That's unanimous, Mr. Pope.
You don't want to hear from me. But that's fine, because I'm not your slave boy. I will speak my mind, I will exercise my constitutional rights of freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and will do what I need to do for my rights.
Don't ask me to ask you to leave this building. That's okay. Don't ask me. Tom, I'm not afraid of being arrested. They have to take care of me if they arrest me. Let them arrest me.
You can address them at the next City Council, okay? Okay? It's in the works, okay?
Now, I get tired of them playing the same games and shit. And again, I know that he hates Guest, and he gives him away with it, because they can do what they want to do, but when...
Mr. Pope? Mr. Pope?
And that's fair. I don't care. I really don't give a fuck. Are you taking, Tom, what you are willing to do?
Two points I wanted to make, and I'm going to ask Mr. Guest not to address that. The first thing is, we as a matter of policy and perhaps by law are required to allow citizens to say what they would like to say within limits about elected officials. There's no need for us to defend it, but they have the right to say it and we allow it to be said. They do not have that same right to speak about our staff. Second point I'd like to make is, every ward in this city, as of the last census, started off with 6,669, give or take two, people in the ward. There is no ward in this city that dominates by numbers any other ward. Tammy Abernathy.
City Chambers, I was here on the last meeting, and I was kind of a little upset about what was going on, so I wanted just to speak. True and a fact, Mr. Pope does come up here and talk, but he's known what he's talking about, but I hate that it's that way. I wish y'all could get together and talk about it. Hey, Guest, I have never seen you over in our neighborhood into the Ridgeview area, and I would like to see you there more. Because when I was, came up here with my two oldest girls, we, I had them here in Hickory. In Ridgeview, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it was a wonderful day, wonderful. My youngest played softball, and we enjoyed going to Ridgeview area, watching the children play. Now we don't have anything over there. I don't know what our liaison is supposed to do, and I don't know what Mac is supposed to do, but I would like to see more activities in Ridgeview. We did have the track team, which kept children out of trouble. I was always told, out of times is a devil workshop. That's why I keep my kids busy all the time, so they don't have to be in the street. My two youngest sons, they don't have the privilege of playing softball over there. We don't have anything over there. As Webster, if Webster would say what All-American City would be, it would be that it would take care of its north, south, east and west. I don't see the beautification in Ridgeview. I really don't. And I love Hickory. I see things going over, the park over there where we live at, Danny, that's going up, it's being beautified. But Ridgeview, I don't see it, people. You need to just ride through there. Look at the other parks that are nice and beautiful. We need to bring up Ridgeview so everybody can enjoy all four corners of Hickory City. It just breaks my heart, though, but I believe Mr. Pope knows what he's saying, but I think y'all are butting heads, and I hate that. I would like for all of us to get along, because we would like for people to come back, like to the tree. When people move in, we can tell them about that, or we can tell them about San Cofer, says in Ridgeview, which is a nice restaurant. Y'all need to visit sometime. But that, it just breaks my heart how I come, this next meeting I came to, y'all fuss. But help us citizens out, too. I talked to, Mr. Mayor, about the water rushing in my yard. I feel the same way. It's the horse cove. My yard gets trashed and it comes around from everybody's yard. I talked to you about it, and I think you might have did seen somebody over there. And so, but I don't know whatever happened about it. But beautify Ridgeview, please, because we need it. Don't just do a basketball goal or picnic area thinking that will satisfy us. Just take care of everything, so we can say that we are All-American City. Thank you.
Well, I will tell you, Mrs. Abernathy does not let her kids stay unbusy. I know that. I guess I would just say that I have not observed that we have a council that's partial to one section of the city over another. My observation has been that, and I'm elected at large purely, so I represent every person clearly and distinctly, and any proposed change would not change that. And we just, we just don't allow people to pick and choose what neighborhood's going to give what. That goes for our council members and that goes for our residents. The decisions we make are for the good of Hickory, and I'm satisfied that's true. Okay. Motion to approve the amendments of June 17?
Standby.
Second. Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mr. Zagoroli. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and all members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
A move of approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Ms. Patz. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move would be approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Lael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask the city's planning director, Mr. Brian Fraser, to come to the podium and present a text amendment to the city's land development code to counsel Friday opening the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Wright. Members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Mr. Berry, indicate I'm going to talk about text amendment TA 14-02. Again, this is land development, Article 6 and 14, and we'll go over some of the planner speak and the land development code, and then maybe we can have a discussion of what's proposed tonight. Again, we're basically looking to amend Article 6 and 14 of the Land Development Code, the LDC, as they relate to both temporary and seasonal sales. Basically, the object of this has been to our wish to improve the visual appearance, the aesthetics of the city of Hickory, specifically our roadway corridors and some of the vacant properties where itinerant businesses have sprung up, some of the back of truck operations, and the vendors are not, some of them are getting the proper licenses and permits and other ones are not. But we're trying to, looking at discouraging some of these fly-by-night businesses, and we believe that this text amendment can possibly address that. I'm not going to read this verbatim, but just to go over for the audience, for text amendment 1402, in Article 6, we're recommending amendments for the use table is to put into place both seasonal sales and temporary sales into individual use categories for better interpretation. Categories, again, of seasonal sales and temporary sales. The seasonal sales would be permitted within all existing commercial zoning districts, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Temporary sales would be permitted as an accessory use within all the commercial zoning districts. In 6.2.2.1, we're looking at modifying this particular section to indicate seasonal items or, for items related to holiday or similar events like Christmas and Halloween and the like, and provided the seasonal sales may be a primary use but are limited to a duration not to exceed 45 days per calendar year. One of the key elements of my presentation tonight is as follows. We're looking at modifying this section to indicate temporary sales are for outdoor sales of items related to a business located on that specifically, that specific property in which they are located. That's very important. And we're looking at providing that those temporary sales may be an accessory use to the primary business located on that specific property, and that the duration of the sales is not to exceed 180 days per calendar year. So again, in Article 14, what we're looking at doing in terms of the recommendations for amendments is to delete the current definition for seasonal and temporary sales and provide for individual definitions of both, which is in your packets this evening. The proposed new definitions would work in conjunction with the recommended amendments to Article 6, Section 6.2.2.1, and clearly define what constitutes each type of use. So in plainer simple language, what would be okay would be the carnival or the circus that you see pop up at the mall. Christmas tree sales, wreath sales would certainly be fine, that would not change. Holiday pumpkin sales would not change. Anything agricultural would basically stay the same. Farm stands, fruit and vegetable stands, other things that would still remain the same under our code. The Walmart, the Lowe's, the Home Depot, Target, the big box outdoor displays would stay the same. If the folks on Union Square wanted to have a large sidewalk sale for a limited time period under the code, that would be perfectly acceptable because it would be associated with those businesses on the square in downtown Hickory. Every summer, Dick's usually has a real big tent sale. That would be permitted because it's associated, that tent sale is associated with an operating business, which would be Dick's. And not okay would be some of these mobile sunglasses, $5 cheap, cheap sunglasses that you see pop up during the summer months, and specifically these back of truck rug and furniture sales that you see. You know, you get a whole sectional for a couple hundred dollars, a week later, the folks are gone, you have no means of recompense. One other thing that we're looking at, and I know this is tough for me, but we probably end up banning those black velvet Elvises or dogs playing pool or cars, unless it's in a business, but if it's not on the back of the truck.
You're not going to ban those, are you?
No. It's up to you, Mayor. I'm just a poor planning director.
He likes the unicorns.
The unicorns? I'm not sure I'm going to go there. Okay. Yeah, there's been some discussion. The Planning Commission reviewed this back on May 28 of this year, and they voted seven to two in favor of recommending approval of this amendment. I have had a few phone calls from citizens and council members and some planning commission members since the vote to ask some questions, and we definitely find that the proposed amendments are consistent with the Hickory By Choice 2030 Plan, our city's comprehensive plan. We do find that the proposed amendments are in conformance with the review criteria for text amendments. One thing that you, if I may be so bold and take the liberty, is you, you know, you may want to consider looking further at this, because some issues have come up as how we would specifically regulate, and I'll give you a few examples. How would we regulate food trucks? How would that work? How would we work special, certain special event uses, specifically applying to city-approved special events in terms of craft fairs, shows, festivals, whether they be a one-time only or an annual type of event? We certainly don't want to ban those or restrict those, but if they could possibly be in additional language to the proposed text amendment that you have before you tonight, and I don't think it would be that big a project for my staff and I to put our heads together collectively and add some additional language where those types of uses would be exempt, something that happens out at the stadium or happens downtown or the street struck in the Viewmont neighborhood, or maybe something that should be happening in the next couple of years out on Old Lenore Road. So there's those issues to take into consideration. But again, the Planning Commission, as I said before, did approve this by a vote of seven to two in favor of recommending it. Since then, because of some calls that we've, you know, received from council members, planning commission members and citizens, and it was just a couple citizens, you know, it may be, it may be a good thing to step, you know, one step back and take a look and allow staff to add a couple paragraphs that will exempt those certain uses. You know, sometimes when us planners are writing things, we look at, well, we're going to try to make it commonsensical, but it might not be lawful under the land development code. Common sense certainly doesn't rule in a legal document, which is law, which is the city's land development code. And again, that last slide just talks about the findings and the recommendations that I've already mentioned tonight during my brief presentation to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, entertain such that you may have for me.
You made mention to food. There's a prepared food truck that is out our way at Spring Road.
Yes, sir.
That I passed Saturday when I came back from out of town, and who regulates that?
Well, they're supposed to have a privileged license, is my understanding. Maybe someone could correct me to do business within the city. And they're also supposed to be licensed certified by the Catawba County Department of Environmental Health. Yes, sir. They're supposed to have those licenses. But again, it's not strictly an agricultural use. I was sort of kidding around with someone, and I said, "Well, when I make my yearly run to Raceway to get a dozen of flowers for my wife for Valentine's Day, you know, that's an agricultural use, that's certainly permissible, but if you're selling a little teddy bear with chocolates, that's not." Who's going to regulate that? I want to make this so it's as ironclad as possible, it's as tight as possible, and that, you know, between my professional planning staff and my zoning officer, that this can be easily enforced and regulated without too much room for gray interpretation.
I would like to recommend to everyone, because the way I read it, it would restrict Oktoberfest if it's not agricultural. And I think a whole area of Oktoberfest is, in fact, not agricultural. Same thing with farmer's market. You've got people who have their wares of pottery, there's jewelry, cards, all kinds of different things. And by, the way I read it, was that that would restrict booths. Is that your interpretation also?
It could, it could be interpreted that way. And again, we were looking at taking a commonsensical approach to this, but I think we need to make it tighter. So I would certainly welcome suggestions on that. My staff and I have already talked about some fairly straightforward, simple language that would take care of those issues.
I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater on this one.
Well, some kind of umbrella-type thing if it's under farmer's market.
The distinction on those appears to me is those are permitted, we grant permits for those to be on the square on public property, so...
It's still...
They are, sir, under special events. But special events is a permit that is outside the legal jurisdiction of the land development code. So the land development code, in my opinion, would rule over a special event permit that would be issued by staff instead of under law.
So that's the umbrella versus what's underneath, and I certainly don't want to misstep here. And I would like to, if it's not a burning issue, then we do this when we review all of the issues that have come up at a workshop, that we could do this and hash this out so that we're not taking it piece by piece, but look at the land development code as a whole instead of parceling it out and not having the input upfront.
Was there a specific issue, you don't have to tell me what it was, but was there a specific issue that led to this? We had some...
a whole instead of parceling it out and not having the input upfront.
Was there a specific issue? You don't have to tell me what it was, but was there a specific issue that led to this?
We had some complaints from, from property owners and other business people within the city, mostly about these, again, fly-by-night back-of-truck operations, selling, selling products out of the back of a tractor trailer, selling products out of, out of a, a pod, a storage pod on vacant property or in the middle of a parking lot with or without owner permission.
You see them a lot of Saturdays in parking lots where you think they probably did not have permission.
Yes, sir.
And, and they dumped their wares out on the ground, on the pavement.
And sometimes they're in, you know, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. They may be in direct competition with a business owner, you know, nearby, you know, in terms of sunglasses or mirrors or rugs or whatever, you know, whatever you have.
So if this was adopted, it wouldn't even make any difference if they had the permission of the property owner?
Well, they would need, technically, they need the permission of the property owner. But in this case, the most important section, as I mentioned before very briefly, was that they have to be assoc, what we're looking at is the, the temporary sales use has to be, be affiliated with the business, like, you know, Dick's or, or Sears or Target or somebody having a temporary use or a, a sales tent. Something that just pops up in a parking lot overnight, a lot of it on weekends when it's not, it can't be regulated by my staff, is, you know, what we're trying to, to direct and contain to some extent and make it lawful under the Land Development Code. But at the same time, I don't want to hurt legitimate businesses. I don't want to hurt legitimate vendors at, at fairs or carnivals or established events. That's certainly not the case. We're trying to, you know, promote Hickory and be business-friendly, but balance that without hurting business and having these fly-by-nights come in and, and, you know, handling possibly illegal merchandise, you know, without proper permitting or enforcement.
Would you recommend us tweaking that? You taking it back and tweaking it, or?
Yes, sir. That would be my recommendation. I think if you, if you tabled the public hearing and set it for a date, time, and location specific, that way it wouldn't necessarily have to be re-advertised. That way, it would be my, in my opinion, it wouldn't have to go back to the Planning Commission. We wouldn't lose another month or two. You know, we could come back here, you know, within the next month easily with one or two paragraphs that I believe we would be able to address this adequately where, where you would be satisfied with it in terms of both common sense and under the law.
If you tabled it or continue it, what you would open the public hearing and move to continue it to a time certain?
Let me ask.
Yes, sir.
This, this was approved by the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. Seven to two.
And you're proposing to offer interpretations or clarification of some kind without going back through them?
Yes, sir. It's the council's prerogative to make minor changes in, in this. I think if you, if you opened the public hearing, as Attorney Crone said, and then tabled it to a place, date, and time specific, we would be all right. If you, if you closed the public hearing, then I, it would, again, I'm not an attorney, but you would have to go back to the Planning Commission. If you want staff to do that, we're certainly okay with bringing that back to the Planning Commission with, with any changes that staff proposes. It would just, you know, it would be an extra month or two.
And what's the urgency of this?
That, sir, is totally up to you as mayor and the city council.
I'd like for just go back through the process.
I would like the right process to be gone through.
Come back up through the process the way we're supposed to.
Yeah. I want the right process.
But I have one or two little things I'd like to mention to you in private before you go to the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Just little enhancements.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We've got a public hearing, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request...
But I haven't opened it yet.
Okay. Okay. We're going to open?
We can open it and then continue it until some date out far enough to let us go through the process, but all we save is a little bit of advertising, right?
Yes.
That's right. I don't think there's such a thing as too much advertising.
You can table it and continue it right now before the public hearing and, and instruct staff to go through the process and re-notice it for hearing at a later date. Or you can open it.
I would make that recommendation to table it.
Do we have to vote to table it or to just agree to table it?
You need to vote.
Can we table it to an uncertain date? I mean, like, for instance, I, I'm interested in this. I would like to see this passed. I'm not particularly, so to, for it to be tabled to a time uncertain is not acceptable to me. So I'll vote against that motion, so I'm just asking, Attorney, but we can do that? We can send it to a time uncertain?
Our Planning Commission meets all of them once a month.
You can table it and, and have it go back through the process through the Planning Commission, just like it did coming here, and then call for a public hearing, just like we did today, but it's a public hearing now on the, what you have here plus the tweaks.
Sir, to answer your question, we could bring it to the Planning Commission at their August meeting. They meet on a monthly basis, the fourth Wednesday of every month.
So then when, then we'd be looking at the second meeting in September, right? Is that right? Our first meeting in September would be just five days after that.
You can't make the agenda process. It's always the second.
We can't advertise it. So the second meeting in September, and, and, Mr. Lale, I agree with you. I have a strong interest in this. There were one or two things that I feel are loopholes. I'd like to talk about how we're going to cover those.
Very good.
But do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
The motion is to table it until the second meeting in September. So we can go back through the process.
Correct. Second. It's back to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
And, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think what I'm inferring is that you re-advertise it so the public will know that this...
Okay.
That would be September sixteenth.
It would be closed here. September sixteenth.
Second meeting in September.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mr. Zaggar Rowley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next items on your agenda are the technical and legal components that go with the next steps in council's decision to seek a general obligation referendum, bond referendum. So I would reference you to, in your agenda packet, being, beginning on page two-twenty-nine, two resolutions, and, and the terms that are used in the statute are that council members introduce bond orders. So what you have in front of you on those pages, on two-twenty-nine and page two-thirty, are bond orders authorizing the issuance of twenty-five million dollars in general obligation streets and sidewalk bonds of the city of Hickory of North Carolina. Stipulates all of the various things that that twenty-five million dollars can be spent on. Stipulates that you will make an application to the Secretary of the Local Government Commission, requesting the commission's approval of the general obligation streets and sidewalk bonds. Finds that, or orders it to, you're just basically making a statement that you're doing this in order to raise money for streets and sidewalk facilities as described above, and filing it with the Local Government Commission. Makes the statement that taxes will be sufficient to pay for the principal and interest on the said general obligation street and sidewalk bonds annually due. That a sworn statement of the city's debt has been filed with the city clerk and is open for public inspection, and that the bond order will take effect when approved by the voters at the referendum scheduled for November fourth. The second bond order has almost the exact same language, except for the fact that it's calling for fifteen million dollars in general obligation economic development bonds, and prescribes the purposes for which those funds can be used, being providing land and improvement suitable for industrial and commercial purposes, including acquisition of lands right-of-way easements for industrial and commercial purposes, and providing public infrastructure and facilities in order to make land and improvements suitable for industrial and commercial purposes. Also, again, that you'll file it with the Local Government Commission, that the money will be used for those purposes, that taxes will be sufficient to pay the principal and interest. The debt statement is filed with the city clerk's office, and that the bond order will take effect after a referendum scheduled for November fourth. So I'd ask council to consider taking action to introduce those two bond orders. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Ms. Patton. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just, to just say that, you know, in taking this action here, it's statutorily required, and it's a lot of legalistic language. Doesn't make it necessarily inconsequential, I mean, because we got to, we got to do it, but...
And it will lead us in the future.
It'll, yeah, right, right. So I guess the point is, I didn't want it to appear as if, that, you know, that this is, this is another one of those orders coming through that's just a matter of a bunch of legal language. It's a statutorily required document as we move forward towards the bond referendum, which this council has, has voted to, to conduct in November. And, and I'm sure these documents are available for public inspection. This, this order, that, yeah, okay.
Speaking, in your agenda packet, been on the internet. Will it be a public document moving forward?
And a little further clarification. Although we are running through this pretty quickly tonight, we have spent a lot of time over the last three years getting to this point. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
The next item of, of action, again, is related, and that's called a statement of estimated interest amount on the general obligation bonds. So the city council of the city of Hickory, North Carolina, will consider the introduction of the following general obligation bond orders at its meeting tonight, July fifteenth. Again, streets and sidewalks, twenty-five million, and stipulates the purposes for which that can be used. Economic development bonds, fifteen million, stipulating those purposes. And states that the city's finance officer and the city clerk will file these statements estimating the interest to be paid on those bonds. The total estimated interest on the streets and sidewalk bonds, so the twenty-five million dollar bonds, is estimated to be thirteen million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, based on the following assumptions. Twenty-five million dollars in principles, principal for streets and sidewalks, issued at a four-point-one-zero-four percent interest rate with level principal amortization beginning in the second year after the issuance and ending in the twentieth year. It also assumes the interest rate is based on the estimated interest rate and similar bonds would bear if issued currently plus seventy-five basis points. So that's kind of your range. The total estimated interest for the economic development bonds is seven million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Similar assumptions, fifteen million dollars in principal, four-point-one-zero-four percent interest, with level principal amortization beginning the second year after issuance and ending in the twentieth year, and assumed interest rate is based on the estimated interest rate that similar bonds would bear if issued currently plus seventy-five basis points. Would ask council to consider introducing, again, that's the legal terminology, the statement of estimated interest on the general obligation bonds.
Any discussion?
I'll move the first one. Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Gess. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, we're, I, that we voted on that as required statutorily, and it's a lot like, like a truth in lending document. You know, when you, when you sign those, you see what the interest you'll pay over the life of your loan. But my, my assumption is on the bonds, that it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of assumptions in there. We would have the ability to prepay that.
Or not draw down.
Or not draw down the extent. So I just wanted to, to state that.
Yeah.
That this is a disclosure that is perhaps worst case.
Well, or best case.
Or best case, yeah.
It means we're going to take that money, we're going to do it, it's going to work out great. We're going to create jobs.
Right. There you go.
Can you invest in these bonds tax-free? Is it tax-free on interest? That's why I'm in this for bonds.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm sure there will be an opportunity if anybody wishes to buy some of these bonds. But we're not selling them.
Nope.
The last item for your consideration is to adopt a resolution, as requested by law, to have a public hearing relative to the issuance of the two general obligation bond orders, and to set that public hearing date for August fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Again, to consider two bonds, twenty-five million dollars for streets and sidewalk and fifteen million dollars for economic development. That resolution is on page two-thirty-six of your packet. I'm not going to read it all. It's just simply saying you are having a public hearing on those two bond orders on August fifth, which is your, your next city council meeting, and the location being here.
I move to call for public hearing on August fifth.
Second.
Motion by Lale, second by Seaver. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. Unanimous.
The next department report, I'll ask Mr. Dave Leonetti to come to the podium. As you know, Mr. Leonetti administers, among other things, in his role with the city, the vacant building grant program. He's been doing that for a couple of years, and we're familiar with many of the successful projects that have been tied to that grant. And Mr. Leonetti has been asked by one of the grant recipients for basically a change in policy, and he'll present that for consideration to council this evening. Mr. Leonetti?
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. This grant, or this request comes from Jackside Construction Company to modify their original grant agreement that was originally approved December sixteenth, two thousand and nine for the renovation of the building exterior for their property located at eight forty-four Highland Avenue Southeast. That's the, that's that multi-tenant building directly across the street from the Holler Hosery Mill, as a point of reference. The original grant amount was twenty-three thousand dollars. The project was completed in December twenty-ten and came in a little bit under budget, and that reduced the total grant amount to nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. When it was completed, nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars was paid to Jackside Construction. As you may remember, the previous guidelines, we're going to be talking about the previous guidelines of the grant because this was an older project. Under those guidelines, fifty percent of the grant was paid when the improvements were completed. It had to be done within a year. And then the remaining fifty percent was done upon occupancy of at least fifty percent of the building's square footage. Now, the previous iteration allowed for speculative projects. The current guidelines don't allow for speculative projects anymore. They have to present their end users at the outset of the application, and those are, pardon me, those are approved along with the, along with the grant agreement, and then everything's paid out in one lump sum upon occupancy. So under the previous iteration, occupancy was required within twenty-four months in order to be able to be eligible for that second payment. That deadline was December sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, a year, two years from the date of the original approval. In June, two thousand and fourteen, I was contacted by Bill Burton with Jackside Construction. He told me that he had a tenant that had leased the building, and he was asking about the possibility of payment of the second half of the original grant. This was the first correspondence I had received from Mr. Burton since outlining the occupancy requirement for that, to receive the remaining fifty percent back in December twenty-ten. Due to the expiration of the grant, staff told Mr. Burton that the city would not be able to pay out funds based on that contract. This would be something that would need the approval of city council to, to modify or change that contract. Mr. Burton is requesting the payment, and you have his letter in your packet if you'd like to read the entire request. But essentially, the, the request is due to the fact that he had difficulty renting the building during the process of widening Lenore Ryan Boulevard and the subsequent redevelopment of the Holler Hosery Mill, causing construction traffic in the area. There's no provision in the, the grant agreement for extensions of that twenty-four-month period, and there, there are no funds currently budgeted to pay the remainder of the grant due to the fact that it has expired. So there, there would need to be a budget amendment and allocation of that. The building has been leased to Lenore Ryan University to house, in the future, their physician assistant program there. The renovations have not begun yet for the interior outfit and some parking lot changes. They're planned to begin in the coming months. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thanks.
I have a question. Well, are you of the mind that you're going to change the, the...
Well, are you of the mind that you're going to change the agreement and pay him before the people occupied the space?
No, no payment would be made until the space was actually occupied. If council wishes to amend the agreement, there would be no payment made until...
Okay.
I would work with Attorney Dula to draft something that would work with whatever city council wishes to do.
Is this in any way jeopardize any projects ongoing now?
Well, there's no funds budgeted for it currently, so, I mean, it'd be $9,917 that would need to be found from somebody.
Would it come out, Jennifer?
Hmm.
It would have to come back, so it would need a budget amendment from contingency or somewhere to actually appropriate the money.
I participated in the discussions on this, and it's clearly not a hardship case, and wasn't presented as a hardship case. It's sort of a fairness thing. I think we all can see how difficult it might have been to have gotten a tenant when we had, went from Lenor Ryan Boulevard and the disruption, and traffic, and dust, to Holler, or they were in there somehow together, to Marantz, and years of person who, in good faith, did exactly what we asked. We have a great end result. It sort of just becomes a fairness thing, and of course, people hate it when government says, well, it's just a dollar late, a day late and a dollar short. So, that's no attempt to say it's a hardship, but just saying they could not get a tenant because of the progress that was going on around them.
Of course, Holler's been complete for a year and a half, hasn't it?
Well, he had a tenant at one time, didn't he, Mr. Berry? Didn't he say they had a tenant at one time, and it fell through?
Yeah, a lot of it, he tied to the delay being the road opening and all of that, and his tenant couldn't go in there because the road was still under construction.
I completely understand what you're saying, but my question would be, does this set any kind of precedent?
We all, we set precedents everywhere, I don't know.
I mean...
This would have to be a fairness issue. I don't think we could say, yeah, we'll just make it a hardship issue and say, all right. Or somebody says, you know, my leasing agent left me, and I didn't have anybody working this for a couple of years. I don't think that was the case.
Since this was under the old guidelines, my suspicion is that it would be extremely, would be incredibly rare, if we'd have a note and come up this route. This seems to be a pretty unique situation.
I think so, and of course, we all wish, maybe he should communicate it early, I don't know. I think he would understand if we said no, although I think he would always feel it's unfair, and I kind of think it's unfair. Hey, some people say rules is rules.
We need to be clear.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, I'll second approval, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that's unanimous.
Final departmental report, we're happy to have Mr. Kevin Greer, Assistant Public Services Director, share with council and the community a honor that we received recently in our utilities system for the quality of water that we're able to produce at our water plant.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak now on a much brighter note. The area-wide optimization program is an award that is coveted, it's one that's really sought after, and I'm proud to say that, of course, the city of Hickory is a recipient for this year. Now, to kind of set the background and help you understand what the area-wide optimization program is, that's actually a USCPA-initiated program, so it's a federal program that's out there. It is not regulation, it's a program that's out there that actually works off of optimized treatment. So, as a city, surface water, of course, is subjected to all kinds of potential pollution. We have to be able to see that coming in, be able to improvise as we're going through the process, and treat for those things as they come in. So this program is set up to where we have to have enhanced monitoring in place, so we have to be able to monitor the water as it comes through the filters continuous, and we report and create an average every 15 minutes on every filter. We have 14 filters, of course, at our plant, so that's kind of our final polishing step when it comes to water. So that's the final safety measure we have in the treatment process. This program does set a set of stringent goals that we're to shoot for, and actually what happens is, when you get to the area-wide optimization, that's a mouthful, program, the regulation says 1INTU, and what the program shoots for is .1INTU, so 90% greater than what the regulation actually is. And the reason behind that is because of the reduced risk for waterborne pathogens. Milwaukee, Wisconsin, if you go back several years, 20 years now, 21 years now, the largest modern-day waterborne disease was in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, in 1993, and that's the largest in the United States ever actually recorded. And really, this event was the impetus for the AWAP program. March 1993, if you can imagine that this council is the governing board for Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and of course, Mr. Berry's the manager for Milwaukee at the time, and much like myself, you have a utility representative standing before you, talking about a situation that you already know is going on. What you don't realize is, when you get into it, is that you have a population of about 1.6 million people that are in that greater Milwaukee area. 403,000 people are sick because of something that's happening in your city. And the EPA and their Wisconsin Health Department, all these groups come in with professionals, and the only common thread they have is the drinking water. The drinking water that they're selling, that they're serving to their customers, is the only common thread for all of those. So of course, they start looking into that, and what they find out is, that in fact, 25% of their population is ill, in fact, because of the drinking water. What happened was, one of their water plants had, I'm gonna say, a sleep-at-the-wheel moment, and they allowed the plant to kind of get out of control through the process. Now, they were still meeting what would be the regulations at the time, actually, which then were a 3INTU instead of a 1. So they were still meeting the regulations, however, what they didn't realize was, they had a waterborne pathogen that was getting through their filters, so it was getting through the plant and through the filters. All of that related to what it's turbidity, what I'm gonna call is that haziness or the dirty look in the water, was getting through the filters, carrying a pathogen. So, when you got into it, they realized they had 403,000 people that were sick, really over a two-week window, and this event by itself kind of rewrote the turbidity requirements when it comes to surface water treatment throughout the United States. In that event, they had $96.4 million in economic impact. That was $31 million in medical bills, and $64 million in lost productivity. So this was a huge effect that this one event by itself had, in what we kind of take as an everyday, common-sense type of procedure. We take it for granted, we open this picket and it's all good. What I'm pleased to inform you of tonight, of course, is, I kind of stole my thunder in the beginning, is I'm very proud to let you know that our water treatment facility has taken on these voluntary goals that we shoot for, and this is our third consecutive year of receiving this award, which means that the water that's leaving our facility meets that .1. We're 90% greater than what the regulation actually calls for, which is a very coveted, again, award to actually receive. Because when you look at North Carolina, there's over 400 water systems in North Carolina. Of that 400 water systems, there's 152 that are even eligible for this award, and of that 152, only 38 across the state got this award, and we're one of those 38. So I'm very proud, again, to be standing before you as council and let you know that your water treatment facility was able to achieve this, and it wasn't by accident, of course. It's the quality of the staff that we have and their commitment to protection of public health and safety. The staff that we have there is very professional, very educated, very competent in what they do, so of course, that makes it happen. As well as, this council and the manager's office should be complimented, because you allow us to spend the capital dollars and the infrastructure that we need, the improvements that we need to do in reinvesting in just this one program, this one facility. We reinvest a lot of money every year, just over half a million dollars every year goes into nothing but fixing parts and pieces of this plant, and this council allows that through our budget. So you're to be complimented, as well as the staff that we have at that facility. So what I want to do, again, just in kind of closing, is to thank you for allowing me to stand before you tonight. We don't always get to share good news, but this is definitely good news. And again, to be 38 of 152, well, 38 of 400, and then 38 of 152, really puts us in an elite class, especially in North Carolina, but really an elite class when it comes to water treatment. And it's, again, your facility is the one that's producing this. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
You said there were 400 in the state of North Carolina?
There's 400 water systems and just over...
38 won awards, so that's...
There's 152 that were eligible, so there's 400 total, there's 152 were eligible, which means there are surface water treatment systems, and then 38 actually received that.
That means everybody doesn't get it.
That's right.
Thank you.
Good job.
I have one, Kurt Hobart, to the Business Development Committee.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Hale to the Business Development Committee. He has stepped up, and we've got him, now we got him. Mr. Zager-Roly?
Yes, I would like to renominate Laura Parnell to the Library Advisory Board for a three-year term.
I'd like to nominate Chris Stevens to the Public Art Commission.
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Sinclair to the Public Art, taking Donna Price's place, who was chairperson and did a wonderful job, and I think Carolyn will do an equally great job.
And Mr. Gess nominates Dean Proctor to Parks and Recreation. I make a motion, we approve those nominations.
I'll second.
Motion by Wright, second by Lale, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the motion is carried. Thanks again to everybody who's willing to serve. Matters on the agenda? No. General comments?
I've got one general comment, Mr. Mayor. You all know, and you recognize, Ms. Lale, earlier, that one of the things we do as the city staff, we try to help the folks in the community, especially the young ones, we have a lot of interns throughout the summer. We get some free labor from a lot of them, and we have great interaction with them. And I wanted to introduce two more tonight, Ms. Camille Hill and Ms. Megan Wilford, they will stand right quick, and give a little wave. They are both students at the Elon School of Law, and they are clerking with Deputy City Attorney Dula for the next several weeks.
Another great service. I want to make one general comment, I had the pleasure of vacation this year in Alaska, and I wanted to tell you, I've spent several days in Anchorage. They have a beautiful, and one of the most expensive, bikeway and parkway system in the United States. And we were on it, and we encountered moose, and we were told by a gentleman who'd come and told us, he said, there's a black bear right around the corner. And when we got there, the bear was gone, and I wasn't sure whether I was glad or not. But we don't have those kinds of natural resources shared, but the point I'm making is what a beautiful thing they have. We probably would never be able to duplicate that because of the timing and the way our streets fall and all of that, but I think it would be an admirable goal to try to have some bikeways in there. Motion to go in closed session? Motion by Patton, Patton, second by Meisner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.